Looks like it's 6:30. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular Town Council meeting for the town of Edgewood. Before we get started tonight with any of the agenda items, I would like to ask everyone to take a few moments of silence and focus their thoughts on our former mayor, Brad Hill, who is fighting a valiant battle and is very ill right now. So if you would please, take just a few moments. I plan on sending my best wishes to his family in the near future, and I hope for the best. First item on the agenda, then, would be the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the zeasimple of perfect friendship among First on the agenda, we have a few things, a little housekeeping. This evening, we had Item B, Item C, and tertiary Item I in discussion and action items under heading three. Unfortunately, our auditing company, the firm, cannot be here this evening to present this, and so I would like to table Items three, B, C, and I, or remove them at least from this agenda and bring them back on a future agenda, or perhaps the next agenda. Because we don't have the audit firm here to present this, I think it would be reasonable and would like to see if we can approve the agenda, removing those items, and I'll make a motion to do so. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I do have, I would like to make a motion to move Item four B, public comment, to be right before three, so discussion and action items, so we can hear from the public this evening before decisions are made. And I would like to include in that motion, moving Item three, M, and N, right after Item E, the hiring of police officer. And the reason for that is because, as we all know, these resolutions and the decision on how the voters will be voting is very critical for the meeting tonight, since we have the July 5th deadline. So my motion is to move Item four B, right before three, and Items three, M, and N, right after three E. Thank you.
Did I hear a second?
Second, Counselor Abraham.
I have a motion to move some items around on the agenda. That would be Item four B, in front of Item three, discussion and action items, and to move Items M and N, after Item E, in three. And how do you vote, Counselor Abraham?
I, Mr. Mayor, point of order, though, we need to take roll, and we need to know who's in the room with you.
As you can see on the screen, I have the clerk treasurer with me, I have the town's attorney, I have two of the town's employees taking notes, and I have the chief of police, and I also have our IT person. Counselor Harmio, are you here?
Yes.
Counselor Abraham, are you here?
I'm here.
Counselor Holly, are you here?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
And I am also present. We have a motion and a second, and Counselor Harmio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Abraham, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Holly, how do you vote?
Aye.
We are moving Item four B, in front of Item three, discussion and action, and we are moving Items M and N, after Item E, three. And we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with that change. How do you vote, Counselor Harmio?
Aye.
Counselor Holly?
Aye.
Counselor Abraham?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. We have an agenda. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I will go ahead and...
Did we vote, did we vote to remove B and C on your original motion?
No, Counselor, we did not.
Your motion to...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, we did, yeah, we did, we did, I'm sorry. I was, I'm sorry, we did B, C, and I. Yes, we did remove those from this agenda. Sorry. My mistake, and a little confusion.
Okay.
Okay. So now, we're moving to the consent agenda, and I would move to approve this evening's consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, I would like to remove Item A, to table it indefinitely, and I would like to remove B, C, D, and E for discussion at the next meeting, just to move our meeting along some.
Do I hear a second on that? Okay, we've got a motion to table Item A indefinitely, and remove Items B, C, D, and E for future.
Yes.
We've got a motion and a second. How do you vote, Counselor Harmio?
Aye.
Counselor Abraham?
Aye.
Counselor Holly?
Aye.
And I vote nay. I don't think we can really table A indefinitely. But motion passes. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, with A, B, C, D, and E having been removed. Do I hear a second? Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Counselor Holly?
Just one comment for discussion before voting, just a note here that we don't have the wastewater treatment plant report. Again, I've been having questions from citizens on that, and also, I had asked in writing for this to be put on, to be addressed, as far as the wastewater treatment plant and the permitting process for NMED, for council feedback, and to have our wastewater treatment plant operator be available to us for that discussion.
Counselor, I am aware of your request, and I'm also aware of which meeting that's going to be on. It's not on this one. We do have a motion and a second to approve the remainder of our consent agenda. How do you vote, Counselor Harmio?
Aye.
Counselor Holly?
Aye.
Counselor Abraham?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. We've at least approved something. Next on the agenda is public comment regarding general matters. I am seeing 11 callers currently in the queue. I will remind the callers that when we unmute your phone, please listen carefully. You will hear the phone say to you, your line is unmuted, or something similar. I only have numbers here, you don't have numbers there, but you will get a queue that says that the phone will be unmuted. Are we ready? Do we have, are we taking notes on who's on which line? Because we need to record that, please. First caller is caller number two. Your line is unmuted. Did you get it? Or do you want me to do it? No, I can't do it. I don't have control of it. All right.
You can't do two, but we can do three.
Okay. Caller number three, your phone line has just been unmuted. Caller number three, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
That's caller 12. That's caller 12. How come? There's caller 14. All right.
Caller three, nothing there?
Caller three, I'm not hearing anyone there. I've unmuted it several times. Go ahead and move on to caller five is the next one I see on the list.
Hi, this is Linda Burke with Greater East Mountain Chamber.
Hi, Ms. Burke. You are caller number five. Okay. Next caller is caller number six. You have been unmuted.
This is Martha Eden.
Martha Eden.
Hello?
Ms. Eden?
Yes, I would like to speak, yes. Please put me on the list to speak.
You are caller number six.
Thank you.
Caller number seven, you have been unmuted. Caller number seven, do you wish to speak?
Am I there?
Somewhat, yes, you are there.
Am I number seven?
Yes, you are. Who am I speaking with, please?
This is Anthony Redzires.
Mr. Redzires, you are caller number seven. Caller number eight, you have been unmuted. Is there anyone at caller number eight? If you wish to speak, please say so. And we have no one responding at caller number eight. Caller number nine?
Hi, this is Tom McGill, I would like to speak.
Mr. McGill?
Caller number nine?
You are caller number nine, yes.
For now.
Caller number...
Sometimes the numbers change.
Caller number 10, you have been unmuted, hello?
Hello, Chris Orr, I'd like to speak.
Chris, Mr. Orr, you are caller number 10.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Caller number 11. Caller number 11, you've been unmuted.
Good evening, it's Karen Kaiser.
Ms. Kaiser, you are number 11.
Thank you.
Caller number 12, you have been unmuted. Caller number 12?
This is Jerry Powers, this is Jerry Powers, I'd like to speak.
Mr. Powers? You are number 12. Caller number 13, you've been unmuted. Hello?
Cheryl Huppert.
Ms. Hupperts, you are at caller number 13. Caller number 14. Caller number 14, you have been unmuted. John? Please say your name.
John McCauley.
John McCauley. Mr. McCauley, you are number 14.
Thank you, sir.
And I see another caller, caller number 15, has just popped in there, so we'll go there. Caller number 15?
My name is Brian Sheldon.
Mr. Sheldon, you are number 15. And that is all the callers that we have. First up would be caller number five, Ms. Burke.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to say, Edgewood, once again, with the help of Tony Harmio and his great organization, has put together a wonderful Father's Day show. They had a huge turnout, it was very successful, and it's a great way for the town to have a great positive profile, not only in the region, but in Albuquerque and Santa Fe. I believe the farthest car came from somewhere near the east coast, I heard Pennsylvania, I'm not sure. Also, wanted to invite everyone to the Chamber Mixer tomorrow night, it's going to be at Church Street Market, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Just drop in, and it is a potluck. And then, chuck wagon souffers start at Wildlife West this Saturday, the 26th of June, and they will be held several times throughout summer, but it's a great experience and something that Edgewood is known for, so help spread the word and support our local businesses. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, there are several people with names up here. There's Sabina Price, Sterling Donner, Robert Sterling, Linda Burke, Brian S. Also, I think that would like to comment.
I see them down at the bottom of the list. We will get there and see if they would like to speak as well, when we get there.
Okay, thank you.
We now have caller number six, Martha Eden. One moment. Let's see.
I, Mayor Pro Tem and Counselors, this is Martha Eden, citizen of Edgewood and citizen of these mountains for over 40 years. I believe the majority of our voters would prefer to vote at large for this particular upcoming election, and I hope the council sees fit to approve a resolution which does endorse that position. In other words, every voter can vote for one commissioner in each district, and I think that's the fairest, and I think it's probably the, as I say, I believe the majority of voters prefer that. We've not had a public hearing, so we really, and as difficult as it is for people to speak, under the current circumstances, I don't think anybody has any idea just how many citizens feel very strongly about this, but I think it's considerable, and I hope you take that into consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eden. Next, we have Mr. Redzires, caller number seven.
Are you there?
Yes, Mr. Redzires.
Okay, all right. I second everything Martha says. I'm a 35-year resident out here, and I...
That was cutting out, I didn't catch that.
No longer here, Mr. Redzires.
Mr. Redzires, are you there?
Yes, I am here. I'm sorry.
You're...
I got something bad in my phone, I don't know what's going on here. Okay, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can, we can hear you fine now.
Okay, I guess I got to talk right into my phone, I guess. I'm on speakerphone, so, anyway, no, I second everything Martha says. I'm a 35-year resident, I've been out here forever, and I've seen all the changes, and I see the good and the bad, and yes, we changed our voting situation, and I try to get all my friends and neighbors involved in, you know, what's going on out here, which I realize a lot of them work, and it's hard for them to do that, but we need to try to work around work schedules and set it up at a more convenient time where a lot of these people can actually attend, because all the meetings that's been going on out here, excuse me, a lot of the meetings, the town hall meetings that's been going on, most everybody has to work, you know, everybody works in town. Hope I made sense.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Redzires.
Come on!
We now have caller number...
What part of the schedule are we on?
Caller number nine. That would be Mr. Thomas McGill.
Right, thank you, this is Tom McGill. I would like to encourage the governing body to come together and approve the districting option for open voting, and get behind it in order to get maximum participation and encourage people to vote and participate in their government, and get it off the table, and get back to running the town, paying your bills, and taking care of business, and I thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. We now have Mr. Orr, caller number 10.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I think Edgewood, right now, is at a crossroads, and how we proceed from this point forward could really make or break this town, and I think part of that is, we need to have a voice of voting for all five council members, and if some of the current council members get re-voted in, that's great, but I think the people of the town really need to have a say on all five votes, and I would highly encourage the council to work on this, to make voting at large happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. Next, we have Ms. Kaiser, caller number 11. Ms. Kaiser?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and good evening to you and the rest of the governing body. I had two matters I wanted to comment on tonight. I agree with all of the callers that have preceded me, until the town of Edgewood has a population of 10,000 or more, it's our legal right to vote for all five positions at large, as it's called, and I've not met anyone that doesn't want it that way, and I think if you could poll those 1,000 people that voted for the change of government, you'd have a ginormous percentage that want a say in this new commission, all five, and there's no reason it should change until our population exceeds 10,000. The law set that number with good intention and wisdom, and we know it's legal, because the law says that we may vote that way, and we know that our neighbors in Raton and Aztec and TRC are similarly sized, they also have commission manager form of government, and they vote for all members of their commission as well. To restrict voting rights, and as Mr. McGill suggested, perhaps restrict participation, I can't see anything good that could come for anyone to restrict the voting rights of the people of Edgewood. The second matter I wanted to briefly comment on, I was really angered slash profoundly disappointed in Counselor Holly's attack on Counselor Harmio at the last meeting. It reminded me of Mayor Bassett just straight up calling Counselor Harmio a liar one night, and I get upset even thinking about it. You'd have to search high and low to find a woman of higher integrity and ethics, and she does not lie, and I think we all know that, so in anger, you know, I'm going to cut you a path, Counselor Holly, because you're usually a respectable woman, but I believe that you all have received more than 100 emails in support of voting for all five commissioners. At the time Counselor Harmio spoke, I don't think you had received an email wanting to only vote for one commissioner, so the term unanimous was far from untrue, it was actually factually correct, so in the essence of civility, there might be an apology owed to Counselor Harmio, but thank you for your time when you get to that election resolution, for God's sakes, please listen to the people of Edgewood, and let this be a happy turnover, a happy election, and a good new day for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Next, we have Mr. Powers, caller number 12.
Yeah, this is Jerry Powers. I would echo Ms. Kaiser's comment. I think she illustrated several important points about why it's important to allow the citizens their right, their voting rights, to vote for all five commissioners, one of those being participation. She mentioned that several cities in New Mexico that are our size vote for all five commissioners, even though they run from their respective districts, but one of the things I noticed in doing the research about this is there is one town that doesn't vote at large, it doesn't vote for all five commissioners, and that is the town of Tucumcari, and what I noticed is there was a huge disparity between the participation rates in voters in that town. There were literally 50 or so voters from each of the five districts that voted, as opposed to several hundreds for each of the other towns. So I would say the reason to do this, if you believe in what people want, we've received, the court's received over 135 now letters in favor, we've received zero. So if you care about what the people want that elected you and that you're supposed to represent, I would say that it would be in your best interest to vote for at large and give them what they want. If there's any other reason that you decide to vote against this, if there's some particular political reason that you believe this shouldn't happen, that people should not be represented, they should not have a greater voice in their government, I would take courage about making that vote. that vote, because the people that turned out at three-hundred percent of normal numbers for the commission election and voted seventy percent in favor, almost, almost to the person told me that the reason they wanted is they wanted finally to be heard in Edgewood. They felt like their government was not listening to them, was not doing the will of the people, but had their own agenda. So if you wanted to give people a greater voice in their own government for what they voted for in massive numbers back in August, I would encourage you to do that. If you vote otherwise, I think it'll be clear that you're not interested in giving people what they voted for in the commission manager form of government, a greater voice in their own town government, and not representing those people that turned out in those massive numbers and that in fact elected you. So I would encourage you to do so, but I think tonight it'll be clear either way on which side of this issue that you stand, and I would encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next, we have Ms. Hubbard, caller number thirteen.
Yes, this is Cheryl Hubbard. I'd just like to point out whenever we first, there was a meeting at Legacy, we talked about the commission manager form of government. It was pointed out that districting would give each district better representation as we felt that, some felt that certain areas in our community were better represented than others. That was one of the points that I actually liked about the commission manager government. Do you think it's more expensive compared to the mayor-councilor form of government, that that's what the people voted for? My only concern, though, now that we have people to represent us in our district, and that everybody then who doesn't live in my district gets to decide who represents me in my district, so I have mixed feelings on this issue. We didn't, it wasn't on the ballot that we would have at-large election when it was voted for, and we say that the community wants this, but we don't really know for sure because we didn't have an election on this. So my general comment, though, is I don't really have a strong opinion either way on at-large or, or each, voting by, by each district, single-member district. I would like to comment on one more thing. The last meeting, the public comments were so ugly. You're offended by what Counselor Holly said to Ms. Hadamio, but every week, Abrams and Holly is reprimanded over, over, and over, I feel like unfairly, and I think that needs to be looked at also, instead of only calling out Counselor Holly. She didn't feel like that. It was true that the whole public felt like it at-large. There was a certain percentage of people who voted, felt that way, but we don't really know because we didn't have an election. So I just would appreciate when you give public comments that they're not the attack, you can address the issues, but attacking people in public, I think it's very, it's just poor. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Next, we have caller number fourteen, Mr. McCauley.
Yes, sir, I'm John. First, I'd like to thank the council for the, behalf of the East Mountain Cowboy Church for voting in favor of our zoning change last month, a couple weeks ago, and we appreciate that, and we hope to be good neighbors and do what's best for the community. And as far as the council's concerned, I just ask that everyone follow Jesus' example and His directive to love your neighbor as you love yourself, and that way we can keep disparaging remarks to a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Next, we have caller number fifteen, Mr. Selden.
Good evening. Unlike apparently most of the people who are talking tonight, my wife and I are very new to Edgewood, we moved here only seven years ago, and we love it, and we're going to stay here for a few more months. It stresses me to see that this issue of our representation has obviously hit many people very emotionally, and I'm not saying they're wrong to feel that way, I just, it's some sorts of deception and stuff like that. I have lived in four states and several counties, and I've actually had the experience of living in a small town with a whole half-inch representation. I've had the experience of living in a market town with all districts, and even a really strange situation in Jacksonville, where we have the town divided up into fourteen districts, but we also had five counselors who were elected at-large, which is kind of strange. But it turned out that that informs how I think I come down on this issue. I'm not strongly vested in that way, but one of the advantages that I think I see to the at-large is, is what happens when somehow there's a vacancy, you know, somebody becomes too ill to perform their duties, you know, for a few months or something like that. One of the things that would happen in Jacksonville is that the at-large councilman would quickly swoop in and, and take over the needs of the people of that district, and that was kind of an interesting thing. And I apologize for not remembering her name, but caller thirteen made a point, but I think this is pretty valuable, I think she was the one that talked about having representation, somebody from her district that represents her, and that brings up a question about what do these districts need if you have at-large representation? And I really do see how it can seem like conflict, you know, are we gonna have everybody at-large, and we have districts, how can we have districts at-large? And here's, here's why it works. The districts serve the purpose of making sure that all parts of town do have somebody who lives in them and are represented. And so I would say to that caller that, while I'm definitely sympathetic, we have a thought sometimes, that at least this way, she would have somebody who represents her, who's from her district, but because we're such a small town, it's really invaluable to have everybody have them, and if they are elected at-large, they will be vested in the entire town, not just their district, and maybe that will provide better service. First, just some thoughts. I, I think in closing, I guess, the decision, since then, another caller made a point about how it wasn't clear in the memorandum, and I think she was right about that, so it wasn't clear, we don't know which way it could be, and so because it wasn't clear, I would think that trying to get the postal public to be vested in deciding to do this, okay, well, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Selden. Would you mind unmuting caller number sixteen? Caller number sixteen, would you wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is James Edmiston. Again, I'm probably a relative newbie to Edgewood, I've only lived here twenty years. I do believe in an at-large voting scheme for at least the first go-round. The way it was districted was that there was at least seventeen hundred people per district, however, that's still a very, very small number, and if a district, if someone from that district does not want to run or volunteer to be a council, councilperson, commissioner, then, you know, what's that district to do? So I think at least for the first go-round, the first election, that it should be an at-large, and I would like to echo what Mr. McCauley said a little bit earlier, is that, you know, this country was born based, and our constitution was written for a fair representation and opinion from, you know, everyone, and I think by, as we've seen in the past election, the national election, that things have been really bad, where people are getting personal in their attacks, and I don't believe, sure, I understand politics, but I do not believe that there ought to be personal attacks. There can be differences of opinions, and one should respect the other's opinion. Just because they don't believe like you do, that doesn't mean that yours is better than theirs. So I think personal attacks on each other does nothing good for agendas or for the town, and that is the most important thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edmiston. Caller number seventeen, you're unmuted. Do you wish to speak?
My name is Ray Seegers, and I'm definitely for the at-large voting for individuals within the districts, and I mean voting at-large town-wide. We could never coordinate and get people to turn out if they were just voting for a district. I've had enough people approach me and try to figure out if they fall in their district now, because the maps cannot be blown up, the ones that are released on the town website. They're having trouble blowing up maps up to see if their street falls in or out of current districts. So that is confusing, if we could do something to allow them to be magnified where they're a little more readable, I think things would go a lot smoother in this election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seegers. We have caller number eighteen. Caller number eighteen, do you wish to speak?
My name is Linda Wheeler. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Wheeler, we can hear you.
Thank you, sir. First of all, we all need to be heard at this election, and at-large, we definitely need to vote for all, all of them, people that sign up to vote. One thing I do want to make clear, or maybe it's my misunderstanding, but if anybody wants to register to be one of the commissioners, they have to do it by July first. Is that correct?
No, ma'am, that is not correct.
When can they sign, when can they register to vote, to be a commissioner then?
August.
Or is it past?
August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth, not July fifth.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for letting me voice my opinion. Our Edgewood is precious to all of us, and we need to go forward, not backwards, and not be angry at one another, but to have a community that works together through all five commissioners, and I thank you for giving me a voice to, to, to let everybody know how I feel as a, as a new Edgewood owner out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. I hope to hear from you again. Caller number nineteen, do you wish to speak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Kay Tanis here, and I am for the voting for all five commissioners, because I have to agree with the previous caller in that I think it will bring out more voters and increase us as a community working together.
Thank you. Could you repeat your last name, please?
Sure, Tanis. T-A-N-I-S.
Thank you, Ms. Tanis.
I'm at the Sandy Air Park, and we have a nice old community out here as well, and we want to keep it that way.
Thank you. And we have caller number twenty. Caller number twenty, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do.
And who do we have at line twenty?
I apologize. This is Stella Anaya, and I would like to speak about a couple of items that, as you remember, last week when I called, I asked for a couple of things, such as opening up the meetings so that we can participate local or face-to-face now. I believe everybody's been, or the majority of the people have been vaccinated, and I think that we do need to open up, we need to start showing people that we, we're here for business, and, and that the town does appreciate them, meaning the members of the town of Edgewood, that wish to go to the meetings in person. So I just want to err on that, that to please open up the meetings. Another thing I'd like to discuss again, and every time I speak, I speak about this particular item, and that is that, as you all know, that I am running for, or going to run for, one of the commissioners' positions. I would appreciate it if the council would be able to vote for at-large voting, so that we can, for one, whoever else has decided to run, that they want or can, start putting their platforms and things together, and be able to know who's really in your district or who's in the town, and what locations do you really need to work. So I ask you, Mr. Mayor, that we bring this up for, for a vote, and let's just get moving. Let's, I mean, things, things have, they can't get any worse, they can only get better, and, and like the last caller said, or I believe it was the last caller said, you know, the four of you that are sitting there right now have an opportunity to, to run, and I think that, you know, some could get elected, and some may not get elected, but we do need to get back and have a full five commissioners sitting up there so that we can start running the town in a, in a professional manner. So that's all I have to say at this point, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anaya. Let's see. We have some people who are on the, on the chat, actually, we have, are actually in the video meeting, and I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna do this.
I guess trying to just go downstairs first.
I just, yeah.
Jessica?
I don't know who Jessica is. Jessica, do you wish to speak?
I was just here to observe, not really.
Okay, thank you. Next, well, Linda Burke, we've, we've heard from you, Robert Sterling. Mr. Sterling, do you wish to speak? It's not unmuting him.
They control it.
Oh, they control it?
Yeah.
Mr. Sterling, if you wish to speak, you may unmute your microphone. I guess Mr. Sterling does not wish to speak currently. Next, we have Sabine P.
This is Sabina Price, and yes, I would like to speak. Good evening to everybody on the board. I would strongly urge to the counselors to anonymously approve the voting at-large for commission manager. I would not want to see the rights of the voters violated. Please respect the residents with this choice. Both my husband and I personally support the voting at-large, as I feel privileged to have the right to make this choice. Please also plan ahead, no matter who holds the public position in 2022, that you all should look at how you want your relationship to be in the future without tension, and I think that's a really important factor. It's not happening now, but maybe we can look ahead. We all need to get along sooner or later. Please let all once and for all agree on this upcoming vote, and let's do this for the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Next, we have Sterling Donner.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to speak with you all. Just a couple.
Hmm.
The right.
Your.
Can you hear me?
Your audio just cut out.
Not better?
Yeah.
Awesome. So I'm just going to go ahead and echo what everybody else, a majority of the rest of everybody else here has said. You know, we want the right to vote for all five commissioners. You know, it's time that we, that you guys listen to your constituents and just make a decision to do it. I agree with Mr. Anaya. We need to have these meetings done in person. It's time that we reopen, the state's reopening, July 1st. It's time that we do the same. And I want to make a comment about the poor taste in the comments that have been made. The reason why is because the frustration is just boiling over. We don't feel like, as your constituents, that we're being heard from a few of you. And, you know, we just want to be heard. We want to be heard, and we want you guys to represent us and be the public servants that you guys were elected to be. So when there are poor taste in comments, it's because we do not feel that we are being heard. And that is why I am running in District Five, is because I feel like we can, that we can, I can do a better job of representing people in this town. And that's where a lot of these other candidates are doing, are running off that same basis. So please, listen to us. We don't want to be in poor taste. We don't want to come off like we are attacking you all. We just want to be heard. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Please, again, just listen to what we are saying.
Thank you, Mr. Donner. I don't see anyone else. We do have one more caller who's just popped in, caller number 21. Do you wish to have the opportunity to speak?
No, I signed up inadvertently, and I came back.
Okay.
I've already spoken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other callers, and I think we have heard from everyone that I see on the session. We'll move on. Discussion and action items. Item A, discussion, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2021-09, a declaration of extreme or exceptional drought, and a resolution to ban the sale and use of certain fireworks within the town of Edgewood. Counsel, I will stand for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I want to say thank you for putting this on. The citizens are quite concerned about fire danger right now, and I do want to say thank you for getting this on the agenda. And I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-09, Declaration of Extreme or Exceptional Drought Condition, and a resolution to ban the sale and use of certain fireworks within the town of Edgewood.
I'll go ahead and second that. I don't know if we need any clarification on this. It's pretty self-explanatory. This resolution would effectively ban fireworks for a 30-day period. And the governor has also issued an executive order asking that the municipalities and other entities, counties, et cetera, in the state move forward with this type of action. I'm sad to say that our county did not get back with me prior to penning this resolution. And my understanding is that they're going to be late to the game taking something like this up on the 29th. If there's any other comment or discussion?
I would like to have, just clarify, are we going to be putting out signs that say fireworks are banned for the next 30 days?
I believe we have signs, and I think we will post them at various locations about the town.
Okay, thank you very much.
As soon as we get this passed. Any other comment or discussion? Counselor Harmio.
Yes, just a comment that I also heard from the public loud and clear, that they are concerned about the fire risks and use of fireworks. So I will be voting in favor of this resolution on their behalf.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harmio, since you've already stated your position, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Counselor Abraham.
Aye.
Counselor Holly.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you, counsel. Next, we have discussion, consideration, and action on, I want to get to the right spot here, on approval of findings of fact and conclusions of law for the public hearing held on June 9th, 2021, on a request for a zone change on the application of East Mountain Cowboy Church for a zone change of one lot from C2 Commercial to SU Special Use. South half, Township 10 North, Range 7 East, Section 36 of 60.20 acres, AKA One Riverview Road, NMPM Town of Edgewood, Santa Fe County, New Mexico. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the findings of fact and conclusion of law for the public hearing on June 9th, 2021, and on the request for a zone change on the application of East Mountain Cowboy Church for a zone change of one lot from C2 Commercial to SU Special Use, South half, Township 10 North, Range 7 East, Section 36 of 60.20 acres, AKA One Riverview Road, NMPM Town of Edgewood, Santa Fe County, New Mexico.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, counsel. Counselors, how do you vote, or is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Counselor Abraham?
Aye.
Counselor Harmio?
Aye.
Counselor Holly?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Okay, next, Item E, discussion, consideration, and action on the recommendation to hire Kyle Elliott as a police officer for the town of Edgewood. I believe Mr. Elliott is here with us online, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve your recommendation to hire Kyle Elliott as a police officer for the town of Edgewood.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and second. Discussion, councilors?
Can we be introduced to Mr. Elliott and have him tell us something about himself?
Yes, please, Mr. Elliott. I know he, oh, there he is.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, and we can see you.
I introduced myself as Kyle Elliott. I've previously been with the Santa Fe Police Department for the last six and a half years. I've recently moved to the area last year, and I was introduced to the town of Edgewood just recently. And I must say, from everything I've seen with the town of Edgewood, it's been very impressive, and I like everything I've seen about this town. And it seemed to me to be a very good town to work for, and an area that I just have fallen in love with, to be honest with you.
That's true.
Thank you. Counselors, do you have questions for Mr. Elliott?
Your application looks very thorough and impressive, so I look forward to seeing you about town.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to work for the town.
If there are no further questions or discussion, I will call the vote. Counselor Holly, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Harmio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Abraham, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Mr. Elliott, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you very, thank you very much, councilors and mayor.
Thank you, counsel. Next, we have Items M and N. And counsel, we have two resolutions here that do the same thing, so I'm curious if you have a preference of which one you wish to act on, because if we act on one, the second one is moot, et cetera, and vice versa.
Aye.
I would be willing to defer to Counselor Abraham's, that she had submitted first, I believe.
Counselor Abraham's is.
Can I ask which one that is? That would be 2021-13.
Okay.
As we consider this one, there was a small typo when I sent this to you. I failed to note the section 3-14-6, after subsection A, in the, in the whereas, that's in red. So that does need to be added in there. This is basically taking the original resolution that we passed that failed to call for the election of a judge, and call for the election of judge. It also just clarifies that having all the information that I've received from the public, all the comments, emails, stuff like that, I believe they wish to vote at-large for each district. And so I included that in the first section in red, where it says, whereas, all commissioners will be elected at-large. And then it determines the terms of the commission, so elected will be determined by lot. So I think this is very clear and easy to understand, and I think it reflects the will of the people, and resolves everything that needs to be resolved so that we can have an election in November. Were there any questions on there?
Just one of housekeeping.
Yeah.
So I would like to see if we can go ahead and, I don't know how we do this exactly, but since we're not going to consider Item M, Resolution 2021-12, we probably need to, we can't really remove it from the agenda because it's a little too late for that, but we.
Right, wouldn't it just die for lack of a motion?
Okay, then I guess I will call for a motion on Resolution 2021-12. Do I hear a motion? I do not hear a motion, calling twice, thrice. Resolution 2021-12 dies for a lack of a motion of counsel. So then we are on Item N.
Okay.
I'm thinking that the stricken whereas in the third paragraph sort of needs to be in this. The council actually did adopt an election resolution calling for an election of five commissioners within the 10-day period, so it needs to say something like that. And we are actually amending something if you are wanting to move this forward. So this is an amendment of a resolution, not a resolution of its own.
Okay, could not we just let Resolution 2021 be superseded by this resolution? We could.
I don't know the number of that resolution off the top of my head, but.
It was 2020-18. It has it at the top of the.
It's up there, at the top.
Yes.
Um.
So you could just put that it supersedes, Resolution 2021-13 supersedes Resolution
That is true, and then Counselor Abraham, I think that Mayor Protem Abrams' comment about that whereas paragraph would have to stay.
Aye. Okay.
Well, I think it needs to say something to the effect that whereas the original resolution was adopted.
Okay.
I don't.
So possibly whereas, under the provision of subsection A, section 3-14-8, NMSA 1978, the town of Edgewood adopted Resolution 2020-18 within 10 days, or something similar to that?
You know, we're doing crafting here after the fact.
Okay.
It becomes very difficult.
All right. Well, I think if we just say that this supersedes 2020-18, then 2020-18 spells all this stuff out. This just supersedes it and clarifies how we're going to vote, and that we need to vote for a judge as well.
I don't know, is it, I'm going to ask the question, legal counsel, is it that I don't know if the language is going to work here.
I mean, I, oops, I don't know this.
There you go.
We can't hear.
Yeah, she's turning on her microphone. Yes.
She really needs to be signed in so that we can see her and hear her, because often she's very far away and can't be heard.
I appreciate that feedback, Counselor Abraham. As to the question that was posed, I think that it is unclear still what language exactly is necessary to make this determination. Once again, we have sought the opinion of the Secretary of State, and we're directed to the New Mexico Attorney General or the Municipal League. That question has been pending with the New Mexico Attorney General, as you all are aware, and we have not received an answer for that yet. For those reasons, whether this resolution is effective in securing at-large voting or single-member district voting is unclear.
Ms. Nixon, I would like to declare that this is the last meeting before the deadline, that we're going to have an opportunity to pass the resolution. I think the citizens of Edgewood have been very clear. I think that if you read the whereas in red that says, provided that the governing body of a municipality has a population of 10,000 or less, may provide for single-member districts as provided in this section. If we do not provide for those districts that voting, then they get to vote for each one. And so I believe it is a decision. And so I believe it is the decision of this governing body that needs to be voted on tonight before the deadline passes. Thank you.
Counselor Abraham, you are absolutely correct that the deadline for the governing body for the town of Edgewood to present its election resolution to the county clerk for Santa Fe is July 5th. That has been done. The original election resolution, the town of Edgewood Resolution 2020-18, along with the original 2005 resolution, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
2020-18?
2020-18 election resolution calling for the election of a municipal judge. Both resolutions have been submitted to the county clerk for the county of Santa Fe. So that deadline has been complied with based on the resolutions that were passed by all the members of this governing body excluding the earlier resolution when certain members were not yet elected to their positions.
Excuse me, but that resolution did not call for the election of a judge?
Election Resolution 2020-18 did not, but the prior election resolution did in fact call for the election of a municipal judge to occur every four years. This is the fourth year, and the county clerk is aware that that position is to be aligned in this year.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Counselor Holly?
I noticed on this resolution, down at the bottom, before we list, one commissioner from District 1, one from 2, that short little paragraph just above there reads, "Person shall live in and be elected at-large." It doesn't really state, "Live in," you know, a certain district or town of Edgewood. And I really hesitate to do wordsmithing on something this important. I'm wondering if we could table and, you know, certainly bring back to vote on before the deadline, and maybe in that time we would hear back from the Attorney General as well.
There's not another meeting before that deadline?
There could be.
We'd have special meetings for things less important than this. But, you know, we've always gotten in trouble when we try to...
Counselor, if you wish to make a motion...
Mr. Mayor, may I make the motion that we pass Resolution 2021-13 superseding Resolution 2020-18 with the change in subsection A, adding the word "section 3-14-6" requires the governing body of a municipality. And to clarify for Counselor Holly, I would say that at the next regular local election to be held on November 2nd, 2021, persons shall live in and be elected at-large to fill the following elective offices. One commissioner from District 1, one commissioner from District 2, one commissioner for District 3, one commissioner for District 4, one commissioner for District 5, and one municipal judge. I would also like to change the date passed, approved, and adopted to the 23rd of June, 2021.
Counselor, I think the objection that I heard from Counselor Holly was that the persons, the snip thereafter the quote from item 1, "这个人 shall live in and be elected at-large" is unclear where they live in.
Live from each district. So...
Shall live in their respective districts, is that what you're saying? See, we're wordsmithing again, counselor.
Yes.
You know, it is not a good idea on something this important. I am beginning to concur with Counselor Holly that we need to put this aside for a moment, bring it back, cut out of whole cloth, and pass it without wordsmithing it, because we're not... I don't know exactly where we are here.
Well, I sent this back to you before the last meeting. You've had this for quite some time. To look at it and make comments, it could have been addressed at the last meeting.
Counselor Abraham...
I have a motion on the table.
Counsel?
So, Counselor Abraham, can you please restate your motion for me?
My motion is to adopt Resolution 2021-13 superseding Resolution 2020-18 with the following changes. In the first whereas, "All commissioners will be elected at-large" and at the words "live in" from each district. The next whereas, we need to add after subsection A, "section 3-14-6 requires." The last change that needs to be made is the date passed, approved, and adopted to 23rd day of June, 2021.
So let me see if I've got it straight, because I don't think I do. The third whereas, are we still omitting that, or are we saying something there?
We... I believe we're still omitting that, but we can add it back in if you wish. If that will get this passed, then we can add it back in.
Just checking. Then in the fifth whereas, you want to insert...
After subsection A, the words "section 3-14-6 requires."
Okay. And then you're going to use the awkward sentence that's there. "Persons shall live in and..." How did you word that?
And be elected at-large to fill the following elective offices. And they're listed.
Okay, but you're not saying that... You're not saying where... That you're not saying that the elected positions, the person must live in that district?
Yes, I am.
Well, that's not what the language says here.
"Persons shall live in their respective district and be elected at-large."
Okay. Then add the words "in their respective district."
Or you could say resident district.
"Persons shall be..." "Persons shall be resident in their..." In the district they wish to represent? I mean...
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry? Whoa, right?
They shall live in the district they're running for.
I'm kind of at a loss of how to wordsmith this one right now.
I just wanted to point out as well for consideration, I included the city of Raton's resolution calling for their election, and they do vote at-large, which is the default position, and that's how their people vote. They do list, "Persons shall be elected to fill the following elective offices, District 1, District 2, and one municipal judge for a four-year term." They do not mention "at-large" because the statute states that, you know, that is the default unless you may elect single-member districting.
Well...
So in all actuality, we do not need to have... But you guys seemed confused last meeting, and I think everybody deserves the clarity, including what the public is asking for. So I agree that Counselor Abraham is trying to bring that clarity here by just adding in this wording in red, and it's really not confusing. I know in my experience with governing bodies, sometimes, you know, well, normally, I think even by statute, isn't it one where the clerk is the one that is tracking the motions and the minutes and what happens in the meeting? Whatever we move and approve, the clerk will make that happen in the resolution. That's just recording what is the will of the governing body. So it's... Wordsmithing is not difficult, and I think it's really all right here in front of you in red. Except for if you want to clarify, they have to live in their respective district that they're running in. You can do that, but that's optional. We could do that for clarity, but just like the city of Raton, it's the default is that, you know, the public gets to vote for all five commissioners.
Well, then, counselor, if that is the default indeed, then why do we need this resolution?
Well, because, first of all, we have to add the judge, but second of all, there seems...
The judge is already on the ballot for this fall.
But the judge was not in our resolution.
And the county clerk is already aware of that resolution.
I understand that, but the judge was not actually put on the resolution that we voted on, 2020-18. And also, if you'll let me finish here, the public has come out unanimously again with one person who had mixed feelings that they were in favor of at-large. So we want to clarify that for the county clerk, right? In my letter to the AG, I presented the three options that municipalities throughout the state use. One would be that the people running don't have to live in their respective districts, but that's not what we said in our original resolution. So then you have this other option of that there's a difference between running and voting, okay? So where the people run from, we already stated that in November, whenever it was, that there would be one commissioner from each district, right? Then there's the whole aspect of voting. So you guys need to separate running from how the people have the right to vote. And what I've heard loud and clear from the public and the people is that they want their voting right to vote for all five commissioners. And so Mayor Protem, with all due respect, I know you are hesitant, but we just need to give that clarity for the public and for the county clerk. And the governing body has that ability to do that by just passing this. And now, remember, city of Raton, the default is there at-large already, but I think it's to the benefit of everybody, just to give clarity. The public, if we can just... If we can pass this tonight, as they've asked us to do, that will allow them to relax and feel that they were heard and be able to understand how they're going to be able to vote come November. There's really no need to drag this on, it's not confusing.
And Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Counselor Holly?
My feeling is this does not provide clarity. There are strikeouts, there is red text, there are words that we're going to add. I would feel much more comfortable if we had a clean copy that didn't need any editing.
Well, Counselor Holly, you should have provided that three days before this meeting. It was an agenda item. I mean, it's super clear. I mean, you're a librarian, you can read red letters and strikeouts. You have edited text with us numerous times, sitting on council. You know how to edit text, so I think...
That's right, and I would never turn in anything like this for a resolution.
She had to show what was going to be changed, honey. I mean, she...
Hey, 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 counselors, counselors, let's watch it. Thank you.
I'm just saying she had to change... She had to show us what's being changed. Otherwise, the argument would be that you don't know what's being changed, and she didn't provide the red letter. I guess the bottom line is, where do you two stand? What do you want?
Counselor, I would love to hear from the Attorney General's office. That's what I would love, because I definitely would like to make the correct decision here. I would hate to see us have an election that gets called back to court for impropriety in any way, shape, or form, and I don't want to pass a resolution that is even the least bit vague.
Well, there is a motion, we can either have a second, or we can have it die, and then we can vote.
Mayor Protem, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to point out to the counselors that the resolution that is in effect at this time, which is 2020-18 in conjunction with 2015-22, establishes the exact same... Or uses the exact same language as the city of Raton resolution that has been referenced by Counselor Harmio. The changes that are documented in Resolution 2021-13 alter that language. What we know is that the Raton resolution was successful, and the election results were not called back. We do not have that same kind of guidance for 2021-13. I think that there is still confusion based on the dispute or discussion that we've been having about the language "live in." And even though it's written in red and therefore changed, it does not establish what the counselors are actually being asked to vote for, nor does it provide any clarity regarding the Secretary of State opinion that we received. And for those reasons, I just think that it's important to take this into consideration very seriously.
Is there anything wrong with clarifying the language of what our people want?
Not that I am aware of, but once again, those questions have been posed to the New Mexico Attorney General, and no response has been received. And given the still confusion about the language and the way that it's worded, I think that there's been an alternative presented here tonight by Counselor Holly to table this and have a clean copy for the public and the counselors to consider before voting on at a special meeting before the July 5th deadline.
You know, I just have to say again that with the exception of "their respective district" phrase, that it is clear, it's the redline copy. So everybody knows exactly what would be superseded and changed, and this would allow the public to understand how they're going to be able to vote in November. and this would allow the public to understand how they're going to be able to vote in November. Um, is there anything, Mayor Protem and Counselor Holly, that you guys object to as far as, do you object to voting at-large?
Not if it's, not if it's constitutional. And I'm not sure. I've asked the Attorney General to answer those questions, and I would prefer to have an answer before I commit to something. That's, that's where I'm at. That plus some of the language here is, needs to be cleaned up. I think this needs some work, but that's my opinion.
And, um, Ms. Nixon, do you, are you aware of a reason why the statute would not be constitutional when other municipalities vote this way?
I do see a reason-
Are they unconstitutional?
I do see a reason that there is at least a question about that, that issue, um, largely because the town of Edgewood is the only, uh, town to transition its form of government since the adoption of the Local Elections Act. And if you look at the New Mexico Constitution, Article 10, Section 6, Subsection B, that portion, that subsection states, quote, "Any member of the governing body of a municipality representing a district shall be a resident of and elected by the registered qualified electors of that district." And as we've discussed, the language in, uh, New Mexico statutes annotated, Section 3-146, seems to suggest that that single-member districting is not required. And therefore, there's a reason to question whether this, this approach is in fact constitutional and in congruence with the laws of this state.
And so, thank you for sharing that. Um, the other municipalities, then, since they elect, if they're under 10,000, they elect at-large in the various forms, either how we do our status quo, or the person resides from and is, um, elected by everyone, uh, or everyone has the opportunity to vote for all five, which is what I'm hearing the public ask for here, are you saying that then they are, um, their elections are unconstitutional?
I am not, Counselor Harmio.
Possibly?
I am not saying that. I believe that they have been grandfathered in with their current voting scheme because the commissioner-manager form of government was in effect in those municipalities prior to the adoption of the Local Election Act, which includes New Mexico statutes annotated 3-14-6.
But the Constitution, Article 10, Section 6, Section B, or, yeah, 6B, says, I mean, that wasn't changed, was it?
And Counselor Harmio, I, I think this represents the exact question and confusion that, uh, I, we were asked and presented to the New Mexico Attorney General, like, for his clarification, and we have not received that clarification. The only answer we have received, um, to the, the questions related to this are from the Secretary of State, who clarified that in fact, the person elected to represent each district must reside in that district. The remaining questions-
And we have that, but there's the difference between running and residing in that district and voting.
That's, that's correct, Counselor Harmio, and, and the question about voting, the second question of those two questions, has been directed to the New Mexico Attorney General as requested by the council and suggested by the Secretary of State.
Well, I remember her stating that the language, and I'm not, I'm not quoting verbatim, but that she referred us that the language and format be, um, discussed with the county clerk.
The suggestion was for the remaining questions that were not answered by the Secretary of State be addressed to the New Mex-, New Mexico Municipal League and the Attorney General's office.
Okay. And the Municipal League has stated that if you're under 10,000, you do not have to run single-member districts, because that's what the statute says. So that was their answer. Um, and I somehow, when I was reading, you know, first of all, I want to point out to Counselor Holly from her comments last time, that we did not have a consensus to send that letter to the AG, right? We just didn't. But you did ask, and it reflected a lot of the questions that Mayor Protem Abrams and Counselor Holly had, and, um, I am curious what it is that you asked them about this being unconstitutional? Because if the Constitution didn't change, then how could this be unconstitutional?
That would be a question that the Attorney General needs to answer.
And Counselor Harmio, you were copied on the correspondence, um, that was written on behalf, or by the town attorney on behalf of the governing body as directed. So those questions are-
Well, directed by who? Because we did not, Jerry, uh, Counselor Abraham and I did not direct you to do that. We said that it was a local, um, decision that we could make locally with the clerk, as SOS said. Um, so no, we did not direct you to do that. No, you did it, and-
No vote.
Well, you can't make a statement like that. Um, but I would like you to read your question for everybody's benefit here, uh, because I would like to know what the exact question is to-
You would like me to read the entire letter that was written to the New Mexico Attorney General?
No, I stated that I wanted to hear the exact question that you had about the constitutionality of electing at-large, because other municipalities do it, and the Constitution hasn't changed.
The information that was sought from the New Mexico Attorney General, as you are aware, as you received a copy of that letter, is what the legal means are to first run, which we got the answer from the Secretary of State, and second, to vote. Those were the remaining questions that were posed to the New Mexico Attorney General as suggested by the Secretary of State and the governing body.
But what is the question about the Constitution if it hasn't changed, and there's other municipalities that run at-large, less than 10,000?
The specificity of that question was not posed in the way that you are, you're phrasing it, though the question of what legal means the governing body for the town of Edgewood may take. To answer the latter of those two questions that we've been discussing was posed to the New Mexico Attorney General.
Okay, but they may not even understand or know that you're talking about, I mean, when I, when I tried to simplify the questions based on what you sent, the, the constitutionality of voting at-large and other municipalities doing this without a change to the Constitution never even came up. So this is the first I'm hearing of it possibly being unconstitutional.
Counselor Harmio, I'm quite confident that our state attorney general is very well aware and versed in the laws of this state.
This is the first I'm hearing about your concern about the Constitution. Uh, Mayor Protem and Counselor Holly, did you know about this concern about the Constitution? Did y'all have some conversations you left us out of, possibly?
Counselor, Counselor, I have a copy of the New Mexico Constitution sitting on my table in front of my computer, and, uh, yeah, I looked at it. And yeah, I was well aware from quite a long time ago that there could be a constitutional issue regarding the change that the Municipal Elections Act made to state statute. That is the basis for all of the questions that I've been asking and the concerns that I have had. I have stated it over and over and over and over in multiple meetings, that I would really like to have the opinion of the Attorney General on this, because the law has changed. We are the first-
Mayor Protem, I did hear you, go ahead.
Excuse me. We are the first community that has made this change since the Municipal Elections Act has passed. Because of that, there are questions on how exactly it works. If, if, and I do mean if, the default is as you say, then this resolution that is now before us is unnecessary, because the default then would be, we vote at-large. But I'm not sure of that, Counselor, and that is the question. Now, if it is not the default, then is the vehicle that we need a resolution such as this? Or are we even allowed to do that under current law? Remember, the, the, the New Mexico Legislature changed the law with the Municipal Elections Act.
Right, but they did not, they did not change the wording that says, provided the governing body of a municipality having a population of 10,000 or less may provide for a single-member district as provided in this section. And my other question is, if this has been a concern, why is it only being brought up, um, less than two weeks before the deadline? We have had this resolution, or a resolution, similar to this-
Since August.
Since August. So why is this the first that we're hearing of it? And why is this the first that the attorney is speaking about constitutionality? And why haven't we had a vote to go forth for, or, um, advice?
Well, we did both of those things, and we already have a resolution that's at the county clerk's office. So I think all of those things have been done, Counselor, but, uh, perhaps you forget.
I do not forget. I happen to be very, um, aware of the past. Um, I think that if we pass this basic same resolution with just a clarification of that the people will vote at-large for each five, each of the commissioners, and each person that is voting does live in the town of Edgewood and is a qualified voter, I do not see how there's any question of constitutionality. They will live in and be elected by people who live in this municipality.
Counselors, just to clarify, uh, this issue was discussed at the end of April at the council meeting. A letter was submitted to the Secretary of State on May 6, 2021. The response was received on May 11, 2021. And following the council meeting on May 26, 2021, a letter with the remaining questions that we are still asking today was submitted to the New Mexico Attorney General. It's not that we waited until two weeks before the deadline. It's that they were asked before.
And I still say, this is a, this is a decision to be made by this governing body. So we make it, or we don't.
You're entitled to that opinion, Counselor Abraham.
And, and you are entitled to yours.
Thank you.
Um, with that, I, we've been going for almost two straight hours. I would like a recess to take a quick break here.
Counselor, I've got a motion that I cannot repeat. Do we have a second?
Um, I am not, you know, okay, you want to, okay, you're denying my request for recess, is what you're saying?
I'm not denying your request for recess. I, we just have a motion before the board. I don't think we should recess with a motion before the board that hasn't either been seconded or not. If there's no second-
Okay, well, I will second.
If there's no second, then I'll, okay, go ahead.
So I will second, and, uh, then we're, we're in discussion.
Okay, and do we wish to recess while we're in discussion?
Yes.
Got one vote?
No.
I got one vote no.
Yes, I do. I requested a break.
So we've got two yeses, one no. Um, I'm not terribly adverse to, uh, to, to a recess, um, but, uh, you know, this is a pretty prickly matter, obviously.
Maybe we need to take a break and then come back with fresh ideas.
Yep, everybody go and, uh, confer as you wish. Five-minute recess.
Thank you. Yes.
Counselor Abraham. Counselor Holly.
Yes.
Okay, we are back. Uh, we have a motion and a second, and I'm still, as I said prior, unclear on exactly what we are penning into this resolution. And I will go ahead and call for a vote. Counselor Harmio?
Well, we, um, we just got the second, and we're in discussion.
Okay, we can discuss. I thought we had discussed for two hours. I guess not.
No, and just for the record, I didn't consult with anyone. I ran to the bathroom and ran back, but I also pulled up, um, the letter that went to the AG's office, and so I did want to just bring that up for council's consideration here. Um, so Ms. Nixon did send this, um, and it talks about, a lot about the census data, and it talks about the process we went through to district, which everybody agrees you have to have five commissioner districts, uh, so that's not a question. Um, and then she asks, she says, this, the, "To your office for direction and guidance regarding its remaining questions set forth below," and it says, "How must the governing body for the town of Edgewood determine whether the municipality will provide for single-member districts?" And then, you know, there's a couple of other, um, bullet points kind of under that, and then asks, um, "Is an affirmative action required for means other than single-member districts?" Well, we found the answer to that with city of Raton. We already know the answer to that one. No, it's not required. And then, um, "How and when must the governing body communicate to the Santa Fe County-
(inaudible)
-whether it will provide for single-member districts?" And that, we know from Secretary of State and the Santa Fe County Clerk, that that's just something that's determined between the town and the clerk, and that she would take probably any form of communication or guidance from that by July 5. And she, and Secretary of State made that clear, as does the election calendar. So we already have most of these questions answered, just logically, um, and by precedence. So my point here, though, is that there is nothing in here asking the Attorney General's office for an opinion on the constitutionality of voting at-large when you're less than 10,000 members in your public. So this is the first that I'm hearing of this. So this is the first that I'm hearing of this, and it's not even in writing.
Counselor Harmio, just to summarize the questions that you read from, it requests the Attorney General to offer his opinion about the legal means by which, uh, the town of Edgewood can determine how the votes will occur. That subsumes the New Mexico Constitution, which I have confidence that our New Mexico Attorney General is very well aware of and versed in, more than the people participating in this meeting.
I am the furthest thing from perfect, but I still do not understand, um, how you're making that jump from, from basically going from asking, you know, what vehicle to use. And Counselor Holly, you know, back in the audio, you will hear that that was brought up about, you know, hot water and what vehicle and how to, you know, provide that to the clerk.
Counselor.
But this says nothing about the constitutionality of, you know, the Constitution hasn't changed.
Counselor.
So the public wants at-large voting, the statute allows for it, and that's something that we can vote on here tonight.
Well, Counselor, I think I will call for a vote. I think we've heard discussion for quite a long time on this. We've got a motion, which I can't restate. I'm hoping that the audio covers it because we've get, oh, yes, we'll see where we get. But regardless, I'm going to call the vote.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I can put my changes in writing for the clerk if that is helpful. The changes that I have made in the motion were to add, um, to change the resolution number to 2021-13, to add in the 1, 2, 3, 4, whereas, that's in red, the words "Section 3-14-6" requires, to please those of you who are confused, I would suggest the wording down there under number 1, where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved." Number 1, at the next, at the next regular local election to be held on November 2, 2021, the candidates shall live in the district they run for and be elected at-large to fill the following elective offices. I would like to add in one municipal judge under one commissioner for District 5, that's also in red. And I would like to change the date that says "pass," "approved," and "adopted" this 23rd day of June 2021. I think that clarifies it enough to get us an election in November.
And I do second that and, um, just again, appeal to you both to pass this and listen, really listen to what the public is saying.
Because if you read your email, you got the same number I got from citizens requesting that they be allowed to vote at large. And that's all the clarification of.
I think I got about 50 today in favor of at-large.
Counselors, do we have any, do we have any other, do we have any other discussion? We've clarified the motion. Got a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. Counselor Abraham, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Harmio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Holly, how do you vote?
Nay. I think it's prudent that we wait for the Attorney General's opinion.
I am waiting for the Attorney General's position as well. Nay. This resolution dies for lack of majority. Thank you, Council. Next on the agenda, we have discussion and consideration and action on the recommendation of Lodger's Tax Advisory Board to award $12,369 to the Greater East Mountain Chamber of Commerce for the general promotion of Edgewood based on events, tourism, activities, and destination information. Counselor, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board to award $12,369 to the Greater East Mountain Chamber of Commerce for general promotion of Edgewood-based events, tourism, activities, and destination information.
And I will, I'll take that second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Abraham?
Aye.
Counselor Holly?
Aye.
Counselor Harmio?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you, Council. Next, discussion, consideration, and action on the, from the recommendation of the Lodger's Tax Board to accept applications for funding year-round. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion that we, um, accept the recommendation of the Lodger's Tax Board to accept applications for funding year-round.
I'll second that. Do I hear discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Holly, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Harmio?
Aye.
Counselor Abraham?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. We are now accepting, uh, applications for funding year-round. Next is discussion, consideration, and action on the fiscal report for the month of May 2021. Counselors, I will stand for a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to approve the financial report for the month of May 2021.
Second. Any discussion?
Mayor Protem, may I?
Discussion.
Counselors, moment, please. Our Clerk Treasurer wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Counselors. So one thing I did want to point out is that we did receive the additional whole harmless funding. So if you'll see our distribution for the month of June was $800,838.29. So that was that tax and rev correcting that issue that dated back to, what was that, December of this year, where the whole harmless is being shorted. So that is where that big increase came in for this month. And moving forward, we should be more at the regular basis, around 130 for food and medical. I do, however, anticipate, um, starting in September, we will see our GRT really spike because effective July 1st, we switch over from point of sale to point of destination-based taxing on the internet sales tax. So we'll see our first distribution in September. And I'm hoping, and I'm pretty confident just by the amount of FedEx, UPS, and other delivery trucks that are driving around, that we'll see that increase.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to table the financial report because it seems unclear to me, and with these changes, I'm unable to vote for this.
I'll second to table.
I've got a motion and a second to table. Counselor Abraham?
Aye.
Counselor Holly?
Nay.
Counselor Harmio?
Aye.
I vote nay. We have a motion and a second to approve the financial report for the month of May. Counselor Harmio, how do you vote?
I vote nay. Still haven't seen the legal bill's information I had requested.
Counselor Abraham?
Nay.
Counselor Holly?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. We don't approve. We tie up and move on. Discussion, consideration, and action rescinding Resolution 20, oh, wait a minute, where are we at?
J.
J. Discussion, consideration, and action to advertise for hire, to hire a Parks and Rec Director or a Parks Director using the current job description. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move, we table this discussion until we have a chance to sit down and budget workshop together. Um, previously, this had been brought forward on an agenda, and I said that I would rework the job description. I wanted more of a doer in the Parks and Rec Department. And, um, anyway, I've got some different ideas to offer, and I think it would behoove us to do that in conjunction with looking at the budget. I make a motion to approve.
We have, Counselor, Counselor, we have a, we have a motion to table.
Right, and I'm making a motion to approve it. To advertise for it. Because as Counselor Holly says, she wants someone who can take some action. Well, they cannot take any action if they're not hired. So I think we need to hire someone.
I will second the motion to table. And your motion to pass is now before us, which is kind of odd, but okay.
I believe we have, in the hierarchy, the motion to table has to be voted on first.
Okay.
Counselor Harmio, how do you vote on the motion to table?
Nay.
Counselor Abraham, how do you vote on the motion to table?
Nay.
Counselor Holly, how do you vote on the motion to table?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion dies for lack of majority. Counselor Abraham, your motion.
Um, I make a motion to advertise and hire a Parks and Rec Director using the current job description.
Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Okay, Council, we have a motion and second. Discussion?
Um, my, my concern is that we have multiple, multiple Parks and Rec issues that need to be addressed. We have not had a Parks and Rec Administrator for well over a year. Um, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee that was in effect at the time our Parks and Rec Director resigned are still interested in seeing these projects through. I think that the best thing we could do as a non-controversial issue for the town of Edgewood is to hire a Parks and Rec Director to help guide us through some, um, possible budgeting issues and ICIP ideas and stuff like that. So I think it's very important for us to have someone in place to fill that position to be able to, um, apply for grants and, and get the Parks and Rec Advisory Board back in action. You know, the Edgewood community desperately wants parks, trails, open space, things for kids to do. And we cannot do that if all we do is contemplate hiring someone for the next year and a half, as we have in the past.
In my comments, uh, I did see in an email and wanted clarification. I think in the past, Counsel Holly, you were going to provide some changes to this position. Is that correct?
That's right. That's what I said. I would like to, um, share those ideas with you all in a budget discussion. I think that would be helpful.
And I'm just wondering if we could make any of those amendments now we have a little bit of time to do that. Is there something that's important to you in there that we could get in there maybe now without delaying the hire?
Well, it's a whole rewrite of the job description, and I don't have it in the packet tonight. I was hoping we could do this during budget talks, so I'm not prepared to do this this evening.
We do have it in the packet.
That's the old job description.
Right, and you could have provided, you could have provided us one since this has been on the agenda multiple times.
Is there something that is, you know, an idea that you have or something important that we could change with it? Um, like an important concept or role or duty or supervision or maybe a particular result you want of this person that we could add in tonight?
As I said, I will not prepare to discuss this tonight. I would also appreciate input from staff that we usually get at our budget discussions.
We don't have budget discussions anymore. Aren't those going to be happening this year?
Counselor, we're currently discussing your recommendation and request for consideration and action on a Parks Director using the current job description. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to state that, um, I agree that time is of the essence. It is summer. Um, there are many things that could happen in these months before winter. Hiring does take some time. I'm sure that whoever would be hired would be open to feedback, um, by council and by the administration as well. If there's something important to us that comes up during budget, I'm sure that these people would be, you know, very willing to accommodate anything that we would like. I just, you know, I think about what the public wants and what the public has asked for. And again, I'll say they, they ask for a swimming pool, but they, they also want programs for the kids. And without a Parks and Rec Director in place that we've been asking for, for a year and a half, there's just limits on what the town can do. So I would just urge you guys again to really listen to what the public is asking from you. I think it was two meetings ago, maybe it was last meeting, we had some people calling in and saying that they really want the Parks and Rec Commission to start meeting again. And of course, the director is, is very necessary for all of that collaboration to happen and to implement what the commission wants. So, um, just again, just appealing to you both to please listen to them, and let's get somebody hired.
So I guess I will throw my two cents worth in here. I, I have a completely different idea of what I would like to see. I, 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 I'm very much in favor of a 100% rewrite of this job position. And I would welcome someone who is a project manager, who would manage projects, not only Parks and Rec, but many, many, many other things for this town. And I know that Counselor Holly has been working diligently to put that kind of thing together. And I would hope that you would agree that it would be a reasonable thing to do to discuss this in our budget hearings. However, if you wish to not do so, I would entertain that as well. Are there any other comments?
I just wish us to move forward. You know, Counselor Holly has had lots of time to provide us something, and I've yet to see anything.
Hearing no further comments. Counselor Harmio, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Counselor Holly, how do you vote?
Nay.
Counselor Abraham, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote nay. Action dies for lack of a majority. I would also like to, uh, to have the same discussion with regard to Item K. Discussion, consideration, and action to advertise to bring forward appointees to Parks and Rec Advisory Board. You want to move forward on this one? Okay, but I would, I would wish- Okay, but I would, I would wish to table it.
It makes no sense to have an advisory board if we have no one to advise.
Very astute, Counselor Abraham.
I'm just curious, Mayor Protem, your rationale for this one?
I will be happy to discuss that with you in a budget hearing.
Are we going to have a budget hearing this year?
Um, I believe we are going to have many. Counselors, I would wish to table this and make a motion to do so. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Counselor Harmio.
Nay.
Counselor Abraham.
Nay.
Counselor Holly.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion to table dies for lack of majority. Counsel, do I hear action on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to have the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee start meeting with Carla or Planning and Zoning Administrator Tanya to be able to bring forth some ideas for the budget hearings that will be happening.
Counselor, I caution you, that is not an item on our agenda.
Okay, then I would ask for you to advertise and bring forth appointees for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Do I hear?
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. Counselor Harmio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Holly, how do you vote?
I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
You may.
Those folks that are currently on the advisory boards for Parks and Rec, are they not in good standing now? Do we have to appoint all new members, or what's the status of the current board?
All of our boards are expired, Planning and Zoning, Parks and Rec, Library, all of them are expired for, because we have not reappointed anybody in over a year.
And they sit in office until a reappointment occurs. So our board is still, is still extent.
So there's really no reason to take action then?
Well, what if there are new people who want to get on? Why can we not advertise for them? Maybe we want new people, maybe we want more people.
Maybe we want another board.
I know Roxy Carpenter has resigned. I think you guys all got a letter from her.
Thank you for answering my question, Mayor Protem.
And how do you vote, Counselor Holly?
Nay.
I vote nay. Motion dies for lack of a majority. Item L, discussion, action, and, and action on rescinding Resolution 2020-07 to reopen Town Hall. Before we move forward on this one, I will remind you that I have said previously that we will follow the state. And the state has now decided to open on July 1, which means the town offices will be open July 1. We can certainly take action on this and move forward, but I'm not sure that this resolution has July 1 as its opening date.
I think we just need to rescind this. And I don't even know that we necessarily have to exclude the library. I know they're doing the shelving.
Yep.
But I will make a motion to rescind Resolution 2020-07.
Second.
So there is now a motion, a motion to rescind 2020-07. And I would add, if a friendly amendment to that would be appreciated, that the town offices will open starting July 1.
Yes, I agree. Counselor Abraham, do you agree?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Counselor Abraham, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Holly?
Aye.
Counselor Harmio?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Discussion items, discussion on Parks and Recreation projects. Who would like to speak to this? Or shall we move on?
This is, I'm sorry, I got lost. Where are we? Oh, discussion on Parks and Recreation projects.
I think, I, I think we should probably talk about these Parks and Recreation projects during our budget discussions, because there's a bunch of things that I would really like to, to bring documentation for and have everybody have in hand. We've got a lot of things going on. A lot more Parks and Rec things than you might imagine. If that's appropriate, if the council concurs, we can have that when we have our budget discussions.
Did you have some ideas now that we could be thinking about?
Well, you already know about three of them. We have Echo Ridge Park, which we are moving forward on. We have the Bridge and Trails in Section 16, which we are moving forward on. We have the Edgewood 7 Trail, which we are moving forward on. I would also like to propose several other trail projects. One in particular is to extend the Trail on Horton from Dinkle to at least Frontage Road, or maybe Cowboy Way. I believe that that is a project that we can achieve within the next few months if we set our minds to it. I, I also have talked considerably about the 344 Trail, which needs to be extended north to Frost. We already have the Right of Way, we already have the DOT Blessing, if you will, to extend that, and we haven't done so in many years now. We are also in process of the trail connecting the 344 Trail to Edgewood Mid School. And we also have several other items that are coming up very soon. It's my hope that in the construction of Church Street, that we have that trail built as well. So we're, we're doing all of those things. We're also looking at several other projects and, and events that we will have during the summer. And I have got some of those here, but I'll bring those up to Matters From. Also, I have a, I have a letter from our, oh, where did I put it? I have a letter from our librarian, which I will wish to read into the record when we get there. So there's a lot of stuff going on. And I think I probably missed three or four as well. So yes, Parks and Rec, we're doing a lot. Whether it's hit the ground yet or not is, is, is a no, it hasn't all hit the ground yet, but it will very shortly. And part of that discussion is budgetary. A big part of that discussion is budgetary. And I want to discuss that so that we can be sure to allocate the funds that we need to move forward on all of those projects.
I think that in April, we asked for the budget meeting. Just curious what the delay has been.
Counselor, we're going to have budget meetings. Right now, we're discussing Parks and Rec projects unless you wish to move on and to Matters From counselors, and you're up first, Counselor Harmio, if you wish to.
Okay. First, just want to thank all of the public. Know that I very much appreciate your feedback and your calls, your emails, all of the communication on Nextdoor, Facebook, and everywhere that I've heard from you all. I also appreciate Ms. Hubbard's honesty about, you know, just kind of having mixed feelings about which way to go on at-large versus single-member districting. And so just know that I'm listening to you all, and I, I really wish that we could have passed the resolution to have that clarity for you all tonight. I would, and on that thought, request that we have a special meeting, because we do know from the election calendar that it is required to give the information to the Santa Feige County Clerk by July 5. And so that is something, a deadline that I would still like us to, you know, follow the law here and, and get that information to her, even just for clarity's sake. And I did want to say, you know, in my letter to the AG for supplemental information, I thought that they needed some of that additional context so that they could, you know, kind of hear what we've heard from the public, which I know Counselor Holly, you had objection to using the word unanimous, but at that time, that's all we had received. And even tonight, we still haven't had a single person, an email, social media, a phone call here in our public meetings, that has said, "I absolutely only want to vote for one commissioner, not all five." And so that is why I use that, because I specifically said in the letter that the public expressed that. So the public that expressed it, it was unanimously expressed, right? I mean, that's what they've been telling us. And that's just the cold hard facts. So I understand there are likely, maybe, you know, I haven't ever heard from them, but maybe people out there that would prefer to not have a voice in all five positions. Just for the sake of voter rights, I don't know why they wouldn't want to have their choices when we are so small. But I did want to address that point, that it was factually correct what I stated in there. And although there may be people out there, you know, we're just not hearing from them. And so the people that we're hearing from, you know, I went back, looked at my emails, I, there was 98 of them, and none that were in favor of single member. So that's what I put in the letter. And now we've received even more emails. I did hear your concern about ethics as far as standing to what the majority of council had, had agreed to. But again, just like last time, I will point out that we had never agreed to sending this letter, and that Counselor Abraham and I thought that that's something, and still think that that's something that we can make a local decision on. I never stated that I represent the entire council. Ms. Nixon did state that, though. She has stated that a few times. And you know from the meetings and email and everything that we didn't agree. So it wasn't a majority. It wasn't a majority decision, and there was never a vote. Though that comment that you stated was not accurate. I looked up some other information as well, and just looking at the municipalities that do vote less than 10,000 at-large. And since the Constitution hasn't changed, I'm still, you know, I still stand strong that this is a local decision that can be made, and the information, like the Secretary of State said, could be provided to the county clerk. For the sake of, of the public, and for those who may be listening, I just wanted to reiterate the three voter options as I see them, and as municipalities across New Mexico vote. And again, we have to remember there's the difference between how people run for office and how people vote for the candidates that they want. That's two distinct things. And I think our resolution addressed the commissioner districts, and everybody agreed that we have to have the five commissioner districts set up probably for the future, even when we go over five, or over 10,000. So if we do. So the three options, as I saw them, and just wanted to lay it out there for the Attorney General's Office, is at-large, the status quo, right? So this is how we are right now. Like the city of Raton, the town of Edgewood could remain in its status quo, and we could make the resolution, match that at our special meeting, if you guys are willing to call a special meeting. So any person, you know, any person could run if you're less than 10,000. The single-member districting is not required. It's an option that says "may" in the statute. The next option is what people have been asking for, which is the ability to vote for all five positions. And really, this just allows the public to have a greater level of voting rights, and have more choices for their new commission. And I think that they do want to have that voice. And you've heard that as well. And then lastly, the optional "may" provide single-member districts if you're less than 10,000 in population. And, you know, this would be like the city of Two Com Carrie. The at-large voting for all five positions, that one was city of, cities of Aztec and TRC. And so I just thought it was important information to, for the AG's office to consider what other municipalities are doing, and, you know, kind of provide supplemental information. I know Counselor Holly, you are worried about me speaking for you, but I basically just took what you guys had stated at that council meeting, and Ms. Nixon stated for you in the letter that she sent, and just tried to make it clear, you know, that you were asking simply, what vehicle do we use? Do we use a resolution? Do we use an ordinance? You were asking the vehicle. You were always also asking if, you know, affirmative action had to be taken, right? And then you were just asking if, or if and when we needed to communicate that to the Santa Fe County Clerk. That's what I said that you stated, because that's what was in Ms. Nixon's letter to the AG, and that's what you guys had been expressing, that you were worried about in the last meeting. So I just, you know, whatever you guys were worried about was, is what Ms. Nixon had put in the letter, and that's ultimately what went to the AG's office. So really, I look at this as informational and supplemental information, and hopefully we do hear back from them, something, some advice, some guidance, and that, that would be great. Again, just for the sake of clarity, right? I don't like everyone being unsettled. So the issue of it being constitutional or not, that's just completely missing from our discussions. So I would like to hear more about that issue and, and what the arguments are. And as far as budget, again, I would like a budget workshops like we normally do, would have liked to have started earlier, but hopefully soon. Would have liked to have started earlier, but hopefully soon. And, let's see, what else did I have? Thank you to Linda Wheeler for calling Edgewood Precious. Because that's the way I feel, too. It is, it's an amazing place and we had a couple of people say that they moved here and love it. And I received emails that said, "This is where we're going to spend the rest of our days," right? And I just, that's just so awesome. Thank you, Linda, for that. And have to say, I agree. And, let's see. We did remove a few items from the agenda tonight. The audit, the fiscal agent agreement, and also the youth programs. And so, these are still important, so perhaps they could be on our next meeting, possibly the special meeting. And what is today? So, we have the 23rd. It takes three days to call for a meeting, right? 72 hours. So, we have, the earliest that we could meet would be like Monday, right? So, we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And we could meet on a Saturday, then the Monday, Tuesday after that. So, I guess, under calendar, let's just look at our schedules and see when we could set the special meeting. And I will pass it on to Counselor Abraham.
Counselor Abraham?
Okay. I would like to, I would like to thank you, Mayor Protim Abrams, for taking time out of before the meeting to remember former Mayor Brad Hill and his struggle with his health. I like that we are able to remember him and wish him well. So, thank you very much for that. Next, I would like to thank all of the people who have taken the time to call in, to write in, to comment on your desires. And I want to say, I enjoy having enough information to be able to feel like I'm actually really representing you. So, thank you. If there are other people out there who have a different opinion, I would still like to hear from you. You know, I don't want to hear just one-sided information. I want to hear from the people and their thoughts. I do want to represent you. I was elected to do that and I hope to continue through the rest of my term. So, thank you. The next thing I would like to once again ask for, an RFP to be brought forth for new legal guidance. I am very uncomfortable with the legal guidance that we're getting right now. I do not feel like the legal representative that shows up at our meeting has my interest at heart. I do not feel like she has the interest of the citizens of Edgewood at heart. And, you know, I do not think that she treats me and my ideas the same way that she treats some of the other council members. And so, I'm just very uncomfortable with that and I feel like they're conflicted. And I have stated that multiple, multiple times. And I believe the citizens of Edgewood also feel like they could have some better legal advice. We should not have to wait for the Attorney General or the Secretary of State to make a local decision that they elected us to make. They made their wishes clear and I think that we should be able to honor those wishes. The last thing is, I have concerns about the wastewater plant permit. You know, we continue to fail to get those reports. We get reports for every other department, yet not our most expensive asset that takes the majority of our budget. It cannot be reported to us monthly and I do not know why. Those are all the things I have to say tonight because I think many times I waste my breath up here trying to do anything for the town of Edgewood. Thank you and have a good evening.
Counselor Halli?
Okay. Well, I do want to remind everyone that the library is offering curbside services on Wednesdays and Saturdays. The hours on Wednesday are 3:30 to 5:30 and Saturday, 10:30 to 12:30. And this coming Saturday, June 26th, the book barn will be open. They've got books for sale there. It will happen from 10 to 2. And if you've never been there before, it's the portable building on the northwest corner of the town offices. So, please check that out. And finally, I do want to send a thank you to the Greater East Mountain Chamber of Commerce for hosting the grand opening and ribbon cutting for Fat Pipe on the 11th of June. Fat Pipe is a co-working environment. They offer office space and conference room space by the hour and on a monthly basis. They've added fiber optic to the building, so there's plenty of bandwidth for online conferences, graphics work, et cetera. The one thing I believe was amiss at that ribbon cutting was that we did not recognize Evita's role in helping Fat Pipe to find a home in Edgewood. I know the executive director of the Estancia Valley Economic Development Association, Myra Pancrazio, has been working with Fat Pipe since the beginning of 2020 to try and find them a home out here in our region. So, I'd like to thank her for her efforts and dedication to continue to bring economic development to our community. And that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. First thing I'd like to do is read a note into the record from our librarians. Dear Council, we would like to sincerely thank you all for approving the budget adjustment request for shelving and furniture upgrades to provide our community with safe, comfortable, and functional library spaces. Unfortunately, current shelving construction poses a safety hazard to our patrons. We understand just how important the library is to our community, so we are working very hard to get these projects completed as soon as possible to have patrons in the stacks once again. In the meantime, we encourage our patrons to take advantage of the library's curbside services, summer reading programs, free take-and-make kits, as well as 24/7 access to digital resources and Wi-Fi in the parking lot of the library. And this is signed by Andrea Corbin and Rachel Martinez. I want to remind everybody about the Edgewood Police Department, Movies in the Park. We have June 26th at 8:00 PM onward. And that's the first one in a series. The next one that we have scheduled is July 10th at 8:00 PM, Trolls World Tour. So, Movies in the Park are moving forward. We also have Saturday, July 31st, beginning at 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Venus Park, Battle of the Badges, police and fire vehicles, bouncy houses, slides, obstacle courses, face painting, games, food trucks. I don't know if we're going to have fireworks, guys, but maybe. We'll see. Join us for food fun dancing, the Austin Van, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM, under the pavilion. Bring your dancing booths. So, there's going to be music and entertainment and all of our first responders will be there. I think that's going to be a real fun time. With regard to more serious matters, I have been plying the AG's office on a regular basis, trying to get a response from them. I have not. Upon receiving that, I will send notice out for a special meeting. I hope to receive that, I had hoped to receive that before tonight's meeting. But, you know, all best-laid plans. As soon as I get that, I will call that meeting and we will do what we need to do. And in the meantime, I'm going to turn it over to the Clerk Treasurer and we'll talk a little bit more about calendar review when we get there.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, Counselors. So, a couple of updates. I hope we finally have received, will receive the guidance before next meeting for Social Security for the Police Department. I think PARA has finally figured out what we need to do. I still don't know what that is yet. I think it's going to be some form of the townwide, the town opting into a 218, an air-modified 218 agreement with Social Security and excluding the Police Department so they can get their wishes as their original election was, gosh, over two and a half years ago. So, I hope to get that resolved very soon. I've sent you a couple of emails that DFA had sent me with respect to the ARP funding. As I get more guidance, more information, we'll send that to you guys as well so that way we know exactly what we can and can't use the funding for. They did send me some other information that I didn't pass on to you, but that's just more respect to our line items with the accounting system. So, we're working with our software vendor to input the new items in that crossover with the state. So, the budget hearings, we're basically anticipating Budget July. I'd like to have possibly a budget hearing every week, starting, you know, maybe the 6th. I'll get a schedule out to everyone. But have three workshops and then on the meeting of the 14th, have a budget hearing as well and followed up by just a special meeting, which is purely the budget at the end, sometime towards the end of the month. We did have a trash, excuse me, trash week. We had dumpsters at the park that were open 8 to 5 last week. We had approximately 160 people partake in that, so it was a successful event. Lots of people were able to clean up properties. On that note, we also had a lot of properties and we've been picking up from just a lot of illegal dumping all across town. I know we can't get on top of it right away. I know there's, we went out to Echo Park. There's consistent dumping out there, so we're trying to pick that up. There was some mattresses that were, I guess, dumped initially at the senior center and somehow found their way into our right-of-way. So, we took care of those as well. And just all across town, there's been an unfortunate uptick in illegal dumping, so hopefully we can stay on top of that, keep Edgewood beautiful. And once again, thank you to everyone who does, you know, does participate in those trash days and helps keep Edgewood beautiful. With respect to the wastewater permit, NMED issued the public notice 2 in error. So, this is my understanding of how the wastewater permit was explained to me in our process that we were supposed to do. So, we filed our initial application. NMED was reviewing our application. Once we received the, or once we received their input back, we would do public notice, the town would do public notice on our application. There would be a comment period for our application process. Then NMED would take into consideration all of our comments, all the comments from the public, all of our input, and compile the actual permit. And then it would go to what they call public notification 2. And then that's essentially where they kind of put us at, was a public notification 2, issued a draft permit. I think that was done in error. So, they're keeping that publication posted. That draft permit is still up there. They're going to give us notification when we can actually issue our public notification 1. As soon as we get that, we'll have our notification published so the public can weigh in on our application. And then from that, after they take that, then they'll reissue their public notification 2. And then we can hopefully, by the end of August, if everything moves as we hope, have an actual permit, updated permit for the wastewater treatment plant. So, that's what I know with respect to the wastewater permit. That's been my communication, speaking with NMED. And as I hear anything else, I will pass it along to you guys. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Calendar review, the next regular council meeting is July the 14th. As I said before, June 16th is movie night at Venus Park and the movie is onward. July 10th is movie night, Venus Park, Trolls World Tour. July 5th, the town office and facilities will be closed in observance of the national holiday of July the 4th. July 31st, Venus Park will have the park event, a community gathering. We will publish a schedule for budget workshops and as soon as I hear from our Attorney General, I will call a special meeting.
Mayor Protim, on that one, about the special meeting. So, Ms. Nixon's letter originally had CC'd Matthew McQueen, but not the Republican representatives. So, in my supplemental letter, I CC'd them. But have you heard, maybe, has McQueen called?
Nothing. Nothing. Not a squeak.
Nothing from the representatives? Okay. I just thought they all should be informed. And then what if we don't? That's my question on, you know, the special meeting. What if we don't hear from the AG?
We will hear from the AG if I have to go down and sit on his front porch.
And, but just for instance, what if we don't? We just hold our special meeting anyway?
We might. I don't know. Let me, let me work on it. I've got a couple of days at least to work on it.
And then as far as calendars go, you know, it is the Fourth of July holiday. I know people sometimes go out of town. But what did you have in mind? The very last day would be the 5th, right? Because we could still pass it and get the information to her on July 5th.
That would be the very last day, but I would hesitate to do that.
She may, their office may be closed on the 5th like ours is.
Their office, their office likely will be closed on the 5th. So, we will do it before then. Well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Council. Thank you, everyone who is attending. Have a very good evening.